Started, prior to the start of this meeting, we've got to hold a public hearing on the district SIPA compliance. Jared Jazinski, the district's IT director, will present this information.
The Children's Internet Protection Act, SIPA, requires that K-12 schools and libraries in the United States use internet filters and implement other measures to protect children from harmful online content as a condition of receiving several or certain federal funding. Evansburg Public Schools is required annually to reconfirm the SIPA compliance. We currently employ checkpoint content filters through our firewall and locally install Blocksi software to provide compliance. All students and staff sign a network and internet acceptable user agreement each year, and every network computer presents acceptable use agreement prior to user login. Evansburg Public Schools has been SIPA certified or compliant since 2001, and will continue to update our equipment and policies to provide the safest online environment possible for our students and staff. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Jared. Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I have no additions or corrections. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Support.
Any questions? Hearing none. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that passes. Now we've got the approval of the consent agenda. So, the things on the consent agenda for this month, the minutes from July 7th, 2025 meeting, and August 11th, 2025 work session, the payment of the invoices, special education retainer fee for Clark Hill Law Firm, the Baron Reza Technology Support Services contract, Title IX Neola Policy Federal Updates First Read, which are rescind policy, policy 2264, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities, and technical correction for policy 2266, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. And then also, we've got the Elkhart Area Career Center Agreement for the 25-26 school year. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright, that passes. Okay, we're moving on to district highlights. Max Tackett of Skillman's going to be updating us on the construction projects throughout the district. As a reminder, these projects are all part of the zero-mill increase bond that the community passed in 2024. Max, take it away.
Alright, let this thing warm up for a second. I guess I can start with introductions. My name is Max Tackett, and I'm the project manager for the Skillman Corporation, and we are your construction manager for your 2024 bond projects. So, I think it's getting close enough that you guys can see it. Well, starting out with the agenda, you'll see that we did get into a lot of your schools this summer. So, we're going to go through Eagle Lake first, then primary and intermediate, we combined together. Middle school and high school, we combined together, and then our parent drop-off loop project as well. Alright, so starting out at Eagle Lake, Eagle Lake consisted of mostly restroom renovations. We did some secure vestibule improvements, and we did new flooring pretty much throughout the entire school, besides the gym and kitchen. So, we did issue the contractors a notice to proceed in late March. We followed up with a pre-construction meeting, and then we mobilized soon as the students were out of the building. We did have a lot of flooring abatement at Eagle Lake. We were lucky, though, that they were able to kind of section off parts of the school while we did that, so we were able to work while they were doing that. That allowed us to have the state inspectors through around mid-July for a 50% inspection. Our final MEP inspections are this week. MEP is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Those final inspections are this week, then the final state building marshal and the fire marshal are coming next week, building inspector, excuse me. That allows us for our substantial completion of 8:25, and that is when the teachers are coming back as well. So, this project had 49 working days total, and at Eagle Lake, we had the most of 25 people working onsite at one time. So, it's been a good project so far. Some of the progress photos here, you can see before and after pictures. On the left, our restrooms were pretty outdated, yellowish tile and floor and walls. So, we did put up all-new floor and wall tile, as well as hard drywall ceilings. We were able to reuse most of the fixtures, but we did get all-new restroom partitions. Big difference in the classrooms, you can see the old carpet had a lot of stains and holes and rips in it. So, we do have new carpeting, as well as a hard tile area by the sink area in every classroom. Hallways are a huge difference as well, so we did have, again, stained and ripped-up carpet in the hallways. There was actually several layers of flooring in the hallways that we had to take off. And then we're putting down this new HVT, which is a hard vinyl tile. It's a really nice product because we do not have to wax it ever. Okay, so getting into primary and intermediate next. Similar to Eagle Lake, we bid them, I think it was one week after Eagle Lake, we got them approved at the same time by the board. So, that allowed us to get our notices to proceed out in late March. We started again soon as the kids were out. We didn't have very much abatement on these two. There was none on intermediate, and there was just a couple of days worth at primary. So, that allowed us to get our demo done sooner than later. And then over at primary, we had some critical structural steel pieces we had to put in. That allowed us for our 50% inspection again. And then again, final MEP inspections this week, and the state guys are coming next week. Same substantial completion date of 8:25, 49 working days. These projects were a little smaller, so we only had 11 people at the most working on these two. Alright, some of the office renovation pictures, so you can see primary was a little bit packed before we opened up a lot of the walls, so it looks, it's quite a big difference in there. Over intermediate, similar. We blew out that old glass block wall, and we're going to be putting some new casework in there and upper cabinets to allow more storage. You can see in the next picture too. So, the one on the far left is an old picture, the one in the middle is that same hallway. And then this picture, some new tile going up in the health room. Alright, getting into the two BARE projects, the middle school and high school. So, these were two of the larger projects, obviously. They had complete office renovations, secure vestibule remodels. We remodeled a couple of special education rooms over at the middle school, and we also did a pretty much complete tear-off of the roof replacement. So, we started these a little bit later. We bid them out a couple of weeks later. We got the contractors a notice to proceed on 4/8, and they were actually mobilized in the middle school, thanks to the middle school moving out for us. We got an early start in there on April 15th. We completed our, we had quite a bit of abatement in the middle school office, so that took us about a month and a half. We then mobilized at the high school, again, as soon as the kids were out. We completed, the high school just had a little bit of abatement on the flooring in the office, so that only took a couple of days. Same thing with our final inspections. You'll notice those dates do not change. We're hitting those all at the same time. That allows us for a middle school substantial completion date of 8:25, so that one allowed us for 89 working days, and we needed every one of them. And then the high school, we did come across a couple of delays, so we are setting them up in a temporary office for a couple of weeks. So, we do have a substantial completion date of 9:22, which is 83 working days at the high school. At those two projects, we've had people working long hours, weekends, and we've had a high of 46 people working onsite. So, there's been a lot of people over there. Getting into some of the pictures, on the left is the old special ed area that we kind of blew up and made into the new middle school office. On the far left is our new middle school secure vestibule. The middle picture is our middle school office has a few restrooms with new tile in it. And then our far, this is our corridor going down the new middle school office. They're putting flooring in right now. Okay, over at the high school, we replaced our new entrance. We kind of eliminated two of the storefront doors to allow for a bigger office space. This is just the picture of the masonry and drywall going up. And then I don't know if any of you could go by the high school this summer, but it was just amazing the amount of roofing insulation that we put up. Seemed like it just kept coming and coming. Couple of pictures of the roofers. They've had a crew of about 10 to 15 guys every day for the entire summer. Okay, and that gets us to our parent drop-off loop project. So, this one was the last one that we bid and issued notices to proceed for. We had our pre-construction meeting on 5/22. We actually, we issued the notice to proceed on 5/20, and the contractor started on 5/23, so three days later, they were onsite. They started out with site clearing, all of their underground drainage, and we had to be ready for all the new concrete curbs and sidewalks by July 1st, which they hit. That allowed us for our state inspections, not much on the parent loop. The inspector just wants to check the ADA access points, pretty much. And then on 8/13 last week, we started paving. And then they are striping either towards the end of this week or the beginning of next week. So, it will be perfect timing. We do need a final inspection there as well next week, just like I said, to check out ADA accessible items and signage, are the two big things he looks at. We had 69 working days on this project and a most of 23 people working onsite. So, if you add up all the numbers, we had, I think it was over 110 people that we've had onsite working, so it's taken an effort. Here's some pictures of the drop-off loop. They actually brought in, it's kind of hard to see, they brought in a special machine for the tree clearing. It was pretty amazing how fast they got that done. We added a ton of underground drainage in this back parking lot by intermediate and primary. Something else that I've never worked with before, but they brought a concrete curb machine onsite, and it was pretty cool. They were able to install curbs a lot faster than by hand. And then, last week, like I said, they started installing the asphalt, and they actually set up a little mobile asphalt plant where they were loading smaller trucks to take them back to that parking lot. Here's a picture of the base layer going down, so the first layer of asphalt going down. This is our parking lot, smaller parking lot, new driveway over by primary, and then that's our larger parking lot over by intermediate. Alright, the next two months are going to be critical as we close these projects out. So, we do have contractor closeout meetings set up this week with all of the contractors. As I've mentioned several times, we have our final inspections these next couple of weeks. We are in the process of final cleaning and moving back in as we speak. We are working with the architect and owner to set up a punch list and have that completed within the next couple of weeks. Any final systems testing, validation, and commissioning, that's more of an HVAC mechanical thing. Process our certificates of substantial completion, so I'm sure you guys have heard me say that word a lot. Substantial completion is important because that sets up our warranty dates for everything. So, that's the date that the owner, architect, we all agree to, is the date that the owner could use it for what it's intended for. So, that is our warranty date. Uh, where was I? We also need to process all of our final closeout documents. So, there's going to be some extra material or attic stock going to Christine. There's going to be some owner training. All the final warranties and operation maintenance manuals are going to be collected, and then we'll give the district some final flash drives that contain all that information. And then the final thing on here is just reconciling the final contract amounts and processing our final pay applications. Last slide is just, I just want to thank all of you again, especially these three ladies I have listed here. Dr. Zuch, Gail, and Christine, they've been a big help on all these projects. I've been with Skillman for probably seven years, and these three ladies have been more involved and dedicated to these projects than I've ever seen from any of the other school districts, so I appreciate it. Any questions?
Big thank you to you, Max, and your team. You've been incredibly easy to work with, on top of any concern we've brought to you, so really appreciate that.
Yep, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Max. Appreciate you coming down and giving that presentation.
Yep, I do have copies of this over here. If anyone wants to grab one too, of the presentation.
Moving on to the summer school highlights, Ryan Teller. First time I get to say that, standing.
Well, thank you, everyone. Yeah, it's a pleasure to be able to introduce two teachers who led a great initiative with summer school. I can share, we had a very successful summer learning experience. The culture they created, it's like such a personalized atmosphere that I see why attendance was great and motivation was high. So, there's no doubt we had awesome outcomes for our students, time well spent. And so, joining us are Erin Suchek for middle school and high school, and then Nicole Linton from elementary. So, I welcome you to come up and share about summer school.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Linton. I am a looping teacher at the intermediate, and I had the privilege, for the third year of this year, to run the elementary summer school. This year, we were gifted the whole summer school staff basically back from the previous year, with the exception of changing in one paraprofessional and one teacher that have done it in the past, but they just came back to us this year. We were gifted also to have a special education teacher on our staff that made life so efficient and wonderful for those students. We had 14 students with IEPs that were able to receive those services over the summer and work towards their school-wide goals while there. So, our schedule is pretty amazing for our kids. When they came in, they were able to have a snack on the way in, after giving their high fives and fist bumps to Officer Esseray. And we started our day with ELA, and we had an hour and 30 minutes to an hour and 40 minutes, depending on the grade levels, to work on ELA blocks. All of our teachers would do some whole group instructions, but most of that was small group instructions to where they had a paraprofessional in every classroom, K1, 2, and 3, and we shared one with 4 and 5, which made learning very impactful this summer. After a snack, from about 10:40 to 11 o'clock, along with a short recess, which, don't ask the students, but it was their favorite every single day, that's what I was told, they went in for some math time, and the math that these kids were able to produce by the end of summer school was, it's just, it's amazing to watch their little minds grow. So, in attendance, we had 65 students, 124 were invited. So, that percentage is actually a lot greater than it was in the previous season. 13 students had perfect attendance, which they were rewarded with, you know, candy, because that's what I do. But, one of their favorites that we were able to do, we were able to work with the Edwardsburg branch of the Cass District Library, and we did walking trips every Thursday morning during their snack recess time, and the students were able to pick out a couple of books. The library had great success too, signed up over 10 additional families just at the beginning of our summer school program for those kids to be able to check out books. They didn't have library card, they were all checked out underneath my name, just so these kids had some books in hand while within the classroom. So, with that being said, I gave them the reading challenge of 30 logged books during the summer school, during the five weeks of summer school, and 27 of them rose to the occasion and got all 30. With, almost all, 90% of our students got 20 books or more, and got their ticket to go to the South Bend Cubs game. Next Wednesday, oh, this Wednesday, they're going to be going on the 20th, so those kiddos will actually be able to walk the field before the game starts on Wednesday. So, if anybody doesn't have anything to do on Wednesday, you can go support those summer school kids. So, that was one of those great things, just to see those kids get super excited. It was my favorite part of summer school, is to watch those faces light up, and they're going, "I got 10 books." They'd come see me every 10, and have a little incentive every step of the way. So, I'm looking forward and excited to see what the teachers see within the classroom over as we start into this school year, because as elementary, we all know that there's that summer slide. And with summer school program, we have, last year, we know for sure, with our Title I staff, that that summer slide was not as, it wasn't as where it was usually is at. So, they did a great job, those teachers that we have. They're amazing ladies, and I'm very thankful that they were on staff this summer. Thank you.
I'm Erin Suchek, and I was the lead teacher for the middle school summer school program. There were four of us in the middle school. All four of us were new to middle school summer school, but we, with the exception of one, we all teach in the middle school. So, we were familiar faces to the kids. We had 25 students, which is the largest group that middle school summer school has had in the last three years. Last year, I think it was 12, the year before it was eight. We had 25, and they all stuck with us to the very last day. We didn't lose a single kid, which is good, because you know how to lose kids in the middle school. We had four 6th graders, 13 7th graders, and eight 8th graders who attended. And we were housed in a single room at the high school, and their lessons were based around what their teachers from the previous year had said were weaknesses in math and English. And so, they kind of have universal weaknesses, regardless of the grade, and so we targeted those. In the morning, we would spend a half an hour doing mini lessons about adding, subtracting, multiplying, dividing integers, which, as a social studies English person, I had to reteach myself what an integer was, but I did. And we also did exponents, and we did single-step equations and multiple-step equations as we went through the five weeks to build their skills, that hoping that as they go into the next grade level, they'll be ready for whatever comes at them, because they start integers and exponents and equations, single-step equations in 7th grade. So, they'll be ready as they move forward. In English, we spent many lessons doing writing and working and reading for information and for inference, which are definite weaknesses when they come up to 8th grade. I can speak to that, because that's what I teach. Those are, that's a huge weakness for them. So, we spent a lot of time on that. We spent a lot of time on developing detail and developing your sentence structure, so that you're telling a good story, that you're gauging your audience, and they loved it. We read a story called "The Princess in the Tin Box." They had to write their own ending to it. They all got it wrong, but that's okay. They've watched too much Disney. It's not a happy ending, but they all gave her a happy ending. And then we did one that's called "The Murderer and Mr. Kelly," where they had the evidence, but they had to decide, what happened to Mr. Kelly, and who did it, and where did it happen? And using inference to tell that story and to write it out and build those details. And they loved it. They were fully engaged when they were doing the mysteries and the stories. After doing our mini lessons, they would go, then go to a program called Edgenuity, which is online, where they had targeted lessons that were specific to them, based on the objectives for their grade level, based on those standards that we were teaching. And they would work, and if they needed help, they would come to one of the four of us and sit with us, and we would walk through problems with them. We would walk through readings with them and help them, or you'd have, like, my desk at one point had six kids around it, because they were all on the same reading and all on the same questions, and they were all stuck, so we just did it together. Mrs. Proll had eight kids at her desk one day. I was like, "Do you want to share some?" She said, "No, I'm good. Let me keep all eight." And so, we really focused on what did they need to help them move forward. And we didn't give grades, no grades in summer school. Instead, we looked at progress, growth, and mastery. So, when we talk about progress, are they moving forward in the content? Growth, are they improving and being able to add the things that we're adding to make it more complex outside of our group lessons, when they do individual work? And then mastery, that they can do it 100% on their own and don't need us. By the end, every kid showed growth in at least one area, all 25 of them. And we gave, so she gave candy, we gave gift cards. And every kid got a gift card by the end of our five weeks for showing growth in at least one content area. So, there you go. I'm also going to talk about the high school program, because Mrs. Bidwell couldn't be here, and she was literally in the room next door to me. So, I know what she was up to. Mrs. Bidwell was the lead teacher at the high school. They served 46 students this summer in two sessions. They have an AM session, which runs 7:30 to 10:30, or a PM session that runs 11 to 1. You can go to both sessions if you want to. Students are actually encouraged to go to both sessions, because you make greater progress if you're in both sessions. The high school program is different from us, because it's dedicated to helping high school students get their credits to graduate. These are students who have failed a class and now have to make that up so that they can get back on track. They complete the coursework through Edgenuity. Everybody is working on something different. You got a kid over here on chemistry, right next to him is bio. Over there is algebra II. This one's doing US history. So, they don't do small lessons. They just kind of help the kids as the kids need help. They do not receive grades either. However, if they successfully complete their course with a 70% or higher, they do get the credit on their transcript, so they can graduate on time. The high school program was staffed with six additional teachers besides Mrs. Bidwell. They had math, English, science, technology, and aid for each session, and if they needed social studies, I was right next door. And so, Mrs. Manfred frequently would take, like, four kids who were doing algebra II, who were all kind of stuck in one spot, and she would clump them in a corner and work with them together in a small session. Ms. Swisher-Carroll would do the same thing for English, if they were doing a writing or were stuck in a reading. The teachers for that program mostly just supervise, provide assistance, check assignments, and provide supports. But they do build a relationship with those kids, so that in the fall, when those kids come back, if they start to slide again, they've got these people that they know they can go to, because they will help them. They already did. Much like what we're hoping for middle school, that those kids know us now, and they'll be willing to come to us if they need help. In the five weeks of summer school for the high school, 42 classes were completed for 46 students. That's pretty good. Those kids are back on track for graduation, and the nice thing about high school is that once they finish their classes, they're done, and they don't have to come back. Whereas middle school, they had to stay till the end. So, there you go.
Well, thank you both very much for your leadership and for teaching summer school. Are there questions that we can answer for you?
I just want to let you know, they were really impressed with all the construction that was going on, especially the tree removal over here. That was awesome.
I'm going to say that we were not impressed, because we had a problem with, like, getting people in and out, so we were not impressed.
We were having fun. That's on how many semis it was going to take to get those up. It was 10, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much for coming in. Alright, moving on to items of business. Gerald will present information on the district SIPA compliance, which I think you've already done that. Do you have anything else you have to add to that?
Nope.
Okay, so based on that, I believe that we just need to reconfirm- So based on that, I believe that we just need to reconfirm the district SIPA compliance. So we need to have a motion for that.
So moved.
Support.
All right, and I believe this has to be a roll call, correct? No, no, okay. Any discussion questions? Okay, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that is completed. And then moving on to the roofing bids for the storm damage repair. Gail?
Although the storm happened way back on March thirtieth, ingrained in my brain. We had three companies come out and walk all of our roofs on our main buildings that got impacted, which was the intermediate, this building, and the church. The maintenance garage and transportation were also taken care of, but we moved on those much faster because those were actually leaking. These roofs are not leaking. And then we had, I just thought every roof with, in the athletic fields, was hit with some sort of damage. So it's just been a process trying to get through this and trying to get bids. We had, I had three different companies come out for our buildings because I just felt like they were so far apart in price. We had our first company, which was Millwood, came out and he seemed extremely high. Then we had the interns company bring their own contractor out, and that was Lystra Roofing out of Kalamazoo. And then I just reached out to my business manager group in the area and asked for different contractors that they've had do shingle roofs. So that's how we came up with Weather Shield. So in the process of all these bids, I think Millwood started to get a little nervous. And they came down in price for us a little bit. So I have two different, I sent out this worksheet to you guys in your onboard packet. Up here, it shows full replacement on the admin roof and the intermediate roof. There was some spots with substantial damage, although like I said, we have no leaking on this roof. So we could get by with just repairs. So then I had the companies also do just repairs on the roofs that were affected. In talking with Ed Gennott and Millwood, because Millwood is a vendor that Ed is backing, they said for this roof, we could get by with just repairs on it, which would still be thirty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The church, there is one big section, but I don't wanna get into doing a whole lot other than what actually just needs to be repaired, because we don't know what the scope of that whole project will be once we determine what it's gonna look like on the inside. They may need to replace whole sections of roof on that. So I just wanna get that one buttoned up so we don't have leaks. I do however suggest that we do a full replacement on the intermediate roof, because that roof is at the extent of its life anyway, according to the chart that Ed Gennott has made for us. That one really needs to be replaced in the next year or so. So I figure with insurance covering a majority of the roof, that we should probably look at repairs on the church roof, repairs on the admin roof, and a full replacement of the intermediate roof. That total would be three hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, less the insurance. The insurance will only be asked what Lystra is offering to charge, which is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred. Even though I've been round and round with him about the areas at the intermediate, could we, you know, just do a full replacement? He will not do it. So anyway, I am coming to you asking if we can go ahead with the full replacement of the intermediate, repairs to the admin building, repairs to the church, at a total cost of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-nine coming out of the general fund budget.
We have a motion? And you said that this is through Millwood?
This would be all through Millwood.
Okay. And that's who Ed?
That is who Ed Gennott has recommended. Yep, Millwood also did all the repairs at the athletic facilities, and they did do the, over the maintenance garage too. I'm just afraid that with Lystra, even though they are just residential, I'm just afraid it's just not gonna be a job that we're gonna be happy with. Also, as part of the bond work, the intermediate is having new ice shield put on, and Millwood had won the bond to do that. So they would incorporate that installation at the same time as putting on the roof. And then we wouldn't have two different vendors working on the same roof.
Any other questions for Gail? Can we have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Support.
Okay. Any question or discussion? Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that has passed. All right, let's move on to the school lunch price recommendation. Gail, come on back up.
So, in your packets, I gave you a memo about the school lunch price. Every year, we have to set prices. Last year, Jody and I worked on application for our food service and we were able to get the district under a CEP license, which is a community eligibility program, which means all students get to eat for free. That does cover us for three years. So once again this year, all students will eat free. Staff, on the other hand, does not get to eat free and we have to set prices. In your packet that we sent out on, well, I finished it on Thursday, Cheryl sent it out on Friday, we had lunch prices staying the same. Since then, Jody got a new calculator from MDE on Friday morning saying that you need to change prices. So the new prices for adult lunch would be five dollars and thirty-two cents, an increase of seven cents. And the breakfast would be, three dollars and twelve cents would be a decrease of twenty We all, I asked her, I said, "Do we really have to change them? It's not really that much." But in order to be compliant with MDE, we must change to meet their pricing tool. So I propose that we continue with free lunch for students under the CEP program, but change the adult pricing.
May I have any questions regarding this? We have a motion for this one, please.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or discussion? Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, motion passes. Gail, I hope you didn't go too far away. Time for you to discuss the general fund and debt levy.
Every year, we have to set our debt millage and our operating millage for taxes for the following year. So for the 2025 year, I am proposing we stick with the eighteen mils for operating, as we always do. And to pay off the 2012 debt and the 2024 debt, I am proposing we go with one point one four zero mils and one point seven one zero mils, which is exactly the same amount that we levied last year. So the only increase will be due to property values going up, but we are not asking for any, anymore on our end, so.
Anybody have any questions about this? Okay. Can I get a motion for this, please?
I'll make a motion to keep the debt levies, I can't even hardly say it, the same as the previous year.
Okay. You have support?
Support.
All right, any questions or discussion? This one is a roll call vote. Nick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Justin?
Yes.
And Tammy?
Yes.
Okay, passes.
Thank you. And then I just ask that Tammy and Tony please sign the form so that we can.
All right, and now moving on to substitute pay rates.
So there was just one, you guys have already approved this once. However, once we were proofing it, we realized that one did not reflect the updated state minimum wage, so that's why we are back here again. And it doesn't come into play all the time, because a lot of times we use some former employees that have a different rate of pay, so that's why we didn't catch it right away.
Okay. So we need a motion to revise and update the substitute pay rates as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, any question or discussion on this? Okay, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That passes. Okay, moving on to personnel. We're gonna hold one vote for everyone, so. Go ahead.
Hello. So this evening, I'd like to recommend the hiring of Ms. Laura Corwin as special education instructor at the primary. Laura holds a Bachelor of Science in Mathematics from Indiana University, and a Master's of Education in Educational Leadership from Ball State University. She comes to us from Elkhart Community Schools, where she taught elementary special education. I will say she has the patience of a saint already. The primary office is operating out of the special education room. So right now, she has three squatters in her classroom space, and she would really like to be in there, and she has not issued us eviction notices yet. And so she came in and she worked around the three of us buzzing around in her space today. So that is my first recommendation. And then next, I would like to recommend the hiring of Ms. Bethany Barber, Mrs. Bethany Barber, sorry, as a primary K-one looping teacher. Bethany holds a Bachelor of Science in Early Childhood Education and Interventionist Specialist in Education from Malone University. She started out as a substitute teacher through multiple buildings in the district, but she found her heart at the primary and was willing to keep subbing until an opening at the primary came. And last year, in late August, that opening came. And so we were able to hire her last year on a temporary permit until her certification transferred to Michigan. So we are back recommending her for full-time hire. Thank you.
And Josh?
Happy summer. We have been very, very fortunate to have some high-quality individuals walk through our door for some of our openings at the middle school. Special thanks, I was not here at the June meeting, I think I was, maybe just got done at Oxford University over in England before you guys had your board meeting, but thank you for approving Doug too. He's, he's one of those fantastic additions. Here tonight, I'd like to introduce Thomas Jones. He, and we strongly, highly, highly recommend him to join our sixth grade team. Tom is coming to us from Elkhart Community Schools, where he spent seventeen years teaching. With him is his wife Suzanne. He just told me actually that the only reason she came tonight, because she didn't believe that he was up for hire and she just wanted to see it for herself. So thank you for coming, Suzanne. They have four grown children, Amanda thirty-five, Ashley thirty-two, Chandler thirty, and Mitchell twenty-eight. Tom actually initially started a career in business after graduating from Carroll University, but thank goodness, he found us calling in teaching through the Bethel Program seventeen years ago. Because I'll tell you, when I called on this gentleman, the impact and impression that he's made in his seventeen years on anybody that's, he's worked for, worked with him, was, was pretty tremendous. So huge sports fan, he's already jumped into middle school assistant coach, I believe, for the district. So real go-getter, great guy, can't wait to get to know him even more, but we'd like to recommend him for hire at the middle school.
Thank you, Ms. Corwin. All right, so can I have a motion to approve the hiring of Ms. Corwin, Mrs. Barber, and Mr. Jones?
So moved. Support.
Any question or discussion? Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, well, welcome to the team. Would any of you like to make any statements or anything you'd like to say?
Just, it's an honor and privilege to be part of this school system. I've always heard great things and everyone has been so welcoming and encouraging. I feel very blessed.
Awesome. Thank you.
I would say the same. I've lived in Edwardsburg now for seven years and I'm so excited to be part of this school system and to get to know the community better.
And more excited to get rid of your squatters?
When that comes?
I knew that I would do work here since I started subbing in the district. I was just crossing my fingers, so I'm really grateful that I'm here and happy to do this.
Awesome, we're really excited to have all three of you come on board, so thanks for joining our team. Moving on. Guys, we have a lot to make. All right, moving on to the Michigan Association of School Board Certification of Delegates. So we have to select three people to be voting delegates, and we have the opportunity to have an equal number of alternates for the delegate assembly that's gonna be held on Thursday, October twenty-third at seven PM in Acme, Michigan. So first, I guess, is there anybody who would like to be on that? Chelsea, I think, has already, I think, said she would like to, since she's not here.
Yeah.
That's what stinks about being sick on a day like this. No, seriously, is there anybody who would like to be on this? Okay, hearing nobody, I will go ahead and throw my hat in that ring. Would anybody else venture to maybe come along with me?
Is it just a, I always get confused, is that the one that's the day-long, Tony, or is it?
This is just one day.
It's an evening.
It's an evening.
It's an evening, and then the conference starts the next day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about this? I guess I will go ahead and be one. Is anybody willing to be two or three? If I don't hear that, then we can vote a couple of people in. You don't necessarily have to go, but we at least have the option, and then we'll make the other three people the alternates. And then we have six out of the seven of us, and then if your calendars work, then, then they work. And we'll try to get as many of us up there as we can. So who wants to be first?
I had the opportunity last year, so I feel like somebody else might.
You have to be in attendance to vote? You do.
Yeah.
Where is this at?
Acme, Michigan.
Where's our ways at?
Traverse City, yeah.
Oh, Traverse City?
It's right next door. That's a great place for them to put this. It's so centrally located.
I'm getting for you guys to realize that one.
I guess it's equal to the UP, so. Yeah, exactly. Yes. All right, Justin, can we have you as?
Oh, you know, I, I, that would be tough to be coming back from Traverse City, so I would have to say. I'd like to be an alternate, please.
Okay. Nick?
I can go for it.
Kevin?
I can be an alternate. I like Justin's approach.
I'd like to be an alternate as well, but nobody else, so. Yeah. If Chelsea does not want to go, then.
Well, Chelsea's not here, so you can either choose that she does want to go or I'm gonna be that one.
She loves that kind of stuff. She likes, she's kinda placed up there.
Does she normally go to the conference after, though? Is she planning to go to the conference?
Uh, she may be.
Question, because she did last year.
We'll, we'll go ahead and, I think, put her as one, because she actually may, she likes going to these, so. I think myself and Nick and Chelsea as the first three, and then Kevin, Tammy, and Justin as the alternates. So since you went before, you get to sit this one out for sure. So would anybody like to make a motion for that?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Is everybody clear on who's nominated?
We take a plane? No.
There's one winner, three second-place finishers, three losers.
Isn't it up to three, though, Tony? I feel like it wasn't necessarily three, I think it's up to three, though.
Up to three, yeah. That's what I'm saying. So you don't have to go, but at least if we vote three people in, we can have three, and then we have the alternate, so.
Okay, two of us went last year, and it was in Lansing, so it was easier to get to.
All right.
Way better.
Yeah. Any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Moving on to, now we're on to the Bering Cass School Boards Association delegate. So that's. Uh, so, that's the one for the two counties um, in which there's an organization. I don't know the last time they met.
Yeah.
Um, because I think it's been a couple of years, but we still need to have somebody as a representative. Uh, Chelsea was our last representative on that. Uh, would anybody like to take that on?
I can take that on.
Alright.
Nobody else wants to?
Alright, do we have a motion to approve Natalie? I'm not even gonna slow down. To approve Natalie for that position.
I'll make a motion for Natalie.
Support.
I think I can do all those meetings in time. It's gonna take you guys to drive there back.
Any questions?
Well, I wanna say it was probably two, I don't, I mean, I don't know if anybody went last year, but I was with Chelsea two years ago. We were both attending those meetings, so.
Yeah. Um, alright, uh, so do we have any other questions or discussion? Alright, everybody in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, congratulations Natalie.
Thanks.
Uh, moving on to reports, Dr. Such.
Okay, well, exciting to have our summer school teachers here. I had the pleasure of actually going into Mrs. Suchek's classroom and to see middle schoolers who are excited with the fact they're sitting in summer school. Takes a very talented teacher to be able to do that, so um, it was great just to see all the different activities both there and in the high school classroom and then at the elementary as well too. Lots of smiling faces for being in school in the summer. They were all in air-conditioned rooms, so that helped a little bit too. Um, this past, like a week ago, marching band had had, last week was a dead week, before that was their camp. And they had a parent performance on Friday, which was the day that was like ninety-five on the blacktop. But they did a tremendous job. It's always so much fun to see where they start and then where they end in that week's time. Um, and how much they just learn, not only musically but athletically with their footwork. And then I know we have a lot of athletics kicking off, so some nice creative scheduling with Mr. Pabuta and our soccer teams. Uh, to be able to move that tonight with all of our craziness, trying to finish up our construction bond project, so. Um, nice work on, on his, to get that all taken care of. Um, so just that fun time of year, uh, the staff that we've had coming in to interview have been tremendous. So we have a great team of new teachers. You'll get to meet some more at the next board meeting. But just really impressed with the level of expertise and experience, along with new energy from some of our younger teachers that we're getting to add to our already amazing staff, so really excited to see that. Um, on another positive, this past week, our safety team um, was able to collaborate with Brandywine. Uh, Travis Walker invited us to join them. Uh, they were de-hosting I Love You Guys Standard Response Protocol or SRP. Train the trainers, which is what we'd incorporated into our emergency operation plan last year. So a group of us were able to go become trainers and we're going to um, use our first PDE day training all of our staff and teachers. Um, so really excited about that. Thankful that Brandywine invited us to join, cause then that saved on expenses. It also provide for, provided for some collaboration in here what Bering County is doing, cause Bering County is embracing um, the I Love You Guys framework countywide and with the standard response protocol, which is your common language, your, you know, hold. Uh, your lockdown, all of those um, type of common terminology, which is supported by the Michigan State Police. And which will be required by the state of Michigan come this time next year. So it's nice to be a little bit ahead of the game. So thankful to all of our safety team members that were willing to, you know, spend a day getting that training done. Um, so excited to share that. Unfortunately, um, on a not positive note, uh, our discussions with MDOT with our US twelve connection to go along with our fabulous traffic loop um, that we have in the back, have not gone as we hoped they would be going. So we have had a lot of pushback from MDOT, even to the point of pushback on some of their own ideas. So some of the ideas I know I brought to the board before. We've then said, okay, and then they've come back and said, well, actually that is off the table. So we're looking at a few other possible options, getting some uh, more details behind those. And then we'll share those with the board to get kind of a direction of where we want to head. Cause as of right now, what was bid out is not what we see moving forward. Um, because MDOT has pretty much said we are unable to do that. So incredibly frustrating. Um, unfortunately, having been in a previous district that had had similar um, concerns with the curb cut. I know this can take years in that district. It took about eight years. So, we don't have that timeline on and we want to be good stewards of our community's money. Um, so we're looking at a few different options. We'll bring it back to the board. If it's something looking to be a lot different, we'll bring it back to the community to make sure we have their input as well too. Good news is, we have plenty of things we can spend our bond dollars on that we already had in the bond. Um, but this is something that I know the community really wanted, so we're gonna try our best. But just to keep everybody updated on that. The other unfortunate, not great news that is super concerning and deheart- uh, disheartening is just our legislators and their lack of following their own laws. We were supposed to have a budget set by the state by July one. We are obviously now mid-August, have nothing. Um, so far I've heard there's no real intention to get there anytime soon. And that's just really impactful on districts across the state. We at least are in a good spot considering uh, Gail and Amy and Alicia and I have, you know, looked at our cash flow to make sure, okay, cause we hear talk of, you know, state shutdown come October, how far can we go to make our current payroll? We're pretty solid there if our state aid payments are delayed, which is a testament to all of the work that our district does. Uh, however, all the budgets that um, that you approved and that our administrators have worked hard to put together. We've had to say, what do we need to have students in classrooms working on day one? Anything else that's not critical has to wait until we have a budget. So just incredibly frustrating, disheartening that it's okay for them not to follow the own laws that they've written. And it impacts our kids ultimately, which is just sad. So, other than that, you know, it's that time of year, we're excited to have staff back. Nice to have all of our admin team back. Everyone's been working hard, being super flexible, you know, middle school had to be flexible after spring break. High school's being flexible now. Um, so, good, our, you know, our office staff, our teachers, our parents, everyone's being patient. And I think in the end, they're gonna be really excited with the work that has been done in these buildings and the transformation to make them safer. Um, easily more accessible for parents with the traffic loop. Uh, even without the US twelve connection, I think it's gonna be a, a big improvement. Uh, and then Eagle Lake just looks like a whole new building, so just really exciting. We will, once they are all done, have a time for the community to be able to come in and see all of those spaces. Um, at a time when students aren't in there, but just so they can see where all of their money has gone, so.
That's good.
That's all I got.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, uh, moving on to the reports from subcommittees. Um, we just had a subcommittee meeting. Tammy, do you wanna kind of?
I can just give a quick uh, update. So we will uh, be coming to the board. Um, nothing really to vote on today, but we'll be coming to the board uh, for a first reading in September of several Neola policy changes or uh, rescinds uh, that we saw. Um, one assignment that we have for the board members is, we had talked about starting to review all of our policies. And so, the one thousands, if you think about our, our policies and how they're broken into thousands. Um, we'd like to welcome the board to take a look at those and anything that we feel is outdated, needs updating, anything like that. Um, bring it to uh, the subcommittee and we'll be happy to take a look at those at our next meeting. Um, speaking of which, we'll be meeting at six PM before every board meeting uh, going forward. Um, so that'll be our standing uh, meeting date. Um, we are also going to re- review the foundation, uh, the Hall of Fame. Um, and really the process around that and how that works. Um, and in, including um, several different stakeholders and, and an opinion on, on how that might look going forward. And then uh, the final thing that you guys have all received um, from Courtney in her, in her notes, as well as uh, in our board packet. Uh, we're looking at uh, Trune versus the Neola policies. MASB is now uh, working with Trune for their policies as opposed to Neola. So, uh, we're going to look at the pros and cons, so you'll be receiving some information from Dr. Such on the pros and cons on that. And then we'll, um, she'll bring it before uh, the board for consideration. So that's all that I have from our meeting tonight.
Do we have any questions? Okay, uh, did any other subcommittees meet? Okay, uh, alright, on to questions or comments from the audience? Not seeing any, alright, so moving on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, uh, everybody in favor say aye?
Aye.